Welcome to the Tuesday, October 28th, 2025 regular meeting of the Troutdale City Council. I'm chairing the meeting on Zoom tonight because I'm in the town of Ponce, Puerto Rico, of all places, and we'll see how this goes. We'll start with Agenda Item Number One, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm gonna ask Counselor Allen to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sarah, please call a roll.
Counselor Andrews.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor One.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Davidson.
Here.
Counselor Leamy.
Here.
And Mayor Reben.
Here. Mike, is there an agenda update?
No update, Mayor. Good to go.
All right, very good. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Public Comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comment should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before the council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with the consent of council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. So I'll open it up to public comment at this time. Start with participants on Zoom. Anybody wish to address the council during public comment? Seeing none, is there anybody in the council chambers who wishes to address the council during public comment? And I thought I saw Hans Saul. Is that you? Please, come forward.
Good night. My name is Al Pompeo. I got, thank you so much for, because you guys decided to review the system development charge. I know when they comes to the city, I maybe I don't have opportunity to talk because I not part of you guys and I not part of the staff. I need to, I wants to explain you what is the reason they overcharge me for seventeen years more in system development charge. Like, I have different copies for everybody. Later, you can. The sewer, they charge based on the possible consume. Do you know if no something I consume or no, if the impact can do there, can do. How they said about the seat is completely right. Charge about the seats to restaurants or bar is completely right because if you have more capacity, you go to consume more. So I say, what is the problem? And it's very important, I say overcharge because by the code, U.K. Code and Oregon Code, they say they need to charge the possible impact. What is wrong with that, with that charge? The city decide to charge for every seat point one two. And for some restaurants, it's okay, but they forgot us about something. And it's in, it's in the papers, DQ, they already investigate for many years. When the restaurant is bigger and they have more seating, it's more efficient to use the water. You know, like half, I have a restaurant and I have two machines, a dishwasher machine. Every dishwasher machine is very efficient and they only use one gallon of water every cycle. Like, the auto clerk declared, oh, many years, I use very high volume of water, too many cycles. I use 5,500 cycles every month. But even I use many cycles, that means I wash many dishes, most than any restaurant, never can keep the same like sewer. Because over there, I show my bill. I spend $270 on water. For the sewer is $835. And this is, and what is that reason? It's because for many stories already do the DQ, when the restaurant is bigger, we use less water per seat. Small restaurant, they use thirty gallons water per seat. A restaurant with fifty seats, they use around twenty gallons per seat. When you have a restaurant more than hundred, you only use ten gallons per seat. That means you cannot charge point one two for the restaurant, for all the restaurant. You need to decrease, as bigger the restaurant, you need to decrease the factor. That is the reason they overcharge me all the time. That means for the last seventeen years, I pay around $70,000 more than is supposed to be. No, don't pay. And what is the reason? Because the factor don't decrease and bigger the restaurant. And it's not something I say. It's something, it's DQ already stories in the same thing. They already story, the bigger restaurant, they need to charge less per seat because we are more efficient. I saw my record for the cycle for the water I use dishwasher machine for the last seventeen years. And we always use a lot, a lot of cycles. But we use very efficiently the water. And that is the reason. Needs to change. When it's bigger the restaurant, the rate needs to do lower. That is the point. It's very simple what happened and it's in the story. It's not something I say. It's something already, many stories about it. Thank you very much for hearing me and sorry about bother you. For $70,000 is a lot of money. That's why I fight for this. And charged by capacity of the restaurant is the right thing. Charged by the square feet is not the right thing. As most, as more seats, you go to have more, more clients and you go to use more dishes. Another thing you need to understand, the sixty-six percent of the water and the sewer is, because the water comes, the sewer go, the sixty-six percent of the water use a restaurant is for the cooking and wash the dishes. Seventeen percent is for restaurants. And the another seventeen percent is for mop and cleaning. That means the whole volume of water and sewer use the restaurants is go by wash the dishes. In the small restaurant, many small restaurant, they don't have dishwasher machine. They wash my hands and they use more, more water. My case, I have even two dishwasher because I wants to use very low water. And I did it for seventeen years. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Saul. I discussed looking at the way we charge our, well, sewer rates and SDCs and other things. And I know that staff is working on this. It is a complex issue, but we will take into, we'll factor in the fact that bigger restaurants use water more efficiently. I, that one's not one I'd heard before. So thank you. And we will definitely consider it. Anybody else in the room who wishes to address the council during public comment? All right. We'll close that agenda item and move on to Agenda Item 3.1, which is a presentation from Deputy Jessie Volker on the annual Multoma County Sheriff's Office Toy Drive. Deputy Volker.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today. This will be our fourth year, I think, doing toy drive for the East County. So we have our conference committees of Maywood, Wood Village, Fairview, you guys. And last year, I want to congratulate you on winning the wrapping paper drive. You guys won your Bellagio's Pizza Party. So that was a lot of fun to celebrate with the everybody. You guys gathered over a hundred rolls of wrapping paper. So we still have them. But after attempting to wrap a basketball, that didn't work out real well for me. So this year, we're going to be asking for gift bag and tissue paper donations to make wrapping easier. So we can either give it to the families and they can wrap it when they get home, or they can, or we can help them wrap it. We still have the wrapping paper, so we can do that as well. Bellagio's has also donated the pizza party for this year as they did last year. So excited about that. And that starts on December first through December tw- or November first through December 12th. We'll be collecting all that stuff for then. And then we have, on the next one, we have the save the date for our Fill the Cruiser, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And we will be, you guys, the Troutdale will be represented at Walmart. So you guys are all welcome to come volunteer for half an hour, fifteen minutes, an hour. Come gather toys with us and spend some time hanging out. And then throughout the day, we gather the toys and we drop them off at the Wood Village Baptist Church, where then they get organized by an amazing team of people on December 12th. And then on December 13th, we all gather, which you guys are always welcome to join us again. We have families come. So last year, we served thirteen hundred East County kits. So it went up four hundred from the year before. So we're getting a lot more families that are in need. And what happens is when the family arrives, they say how many children they have. They get coupons and we put the age numbers on those. And then they get an individual shopper. So you go shopping with them for each age group and then take them over to the wrapping area where the gifts are wrapped. And then they can go. And while they wait, we have little bagels and coffee and games and stuff for them to do. We also have a childcare area. We encourage the children to be left home, but if they have to come, we have an area that they can go hang out in. So it's been a really, really positive influence on East County. And we all work together and make everyone just Christmas a little bit happier. We're really looking for, we are partnering with a couple businesses in town to do bike drives. So anywhere from little kids bikes to teenagers, because we have a lot of teenagers that need to get around and are trying to do more things. And so those are for raffle. So the family comes in, they want to try to get a bike, they get a raffle ticket and they can put it wherever bike they want with the helmet. And we're trying to get some bike locks this year donated to make sure that they don't get stolen. So that's pretty cool. We're just asking for a lot of teen, get teen gifts, sports equipment, makeup, artwork, things that are more advanced for older kids. So it's been really cool. Excited for it this year. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions from the council or comments? I had one. Deputy, the, the date you wanted us to volunteer at Walmart to accept gifts, what was that date?
So it's the 29th.
Of November?
Of December, or yeah, of November, 29th of November.
Okay.
And it's from about nine to three. And we're welcoming all ages, grandkids, kids, anyone who wants to come and join us to gather the toys. And our patrol deputies will stop by and have a lot of fun with all the kids' toys. So it's a really good time to just get to the community. Lots of people want to talk to you and just have really good things to say about our communities. So it's awesome. Yes.
What are the hours on the 13th?
The 13th are nine to noon. Yeah, at Wood Village Baptist Church. And that's also a really special time because, I mean, we had, I mean, we had a lot of toys. And the leftover toys that we had, we donated to other churches, other, I think we had the Head Start program, maybe got some. So we did have some leftover toys that we did spread, continue to spread out through East County. So it was very fun. So if you guys have any questions, let me know. I'm always around. So.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
A very, very worthy cause.
Yes, thank you so much.
That was our staff that got all that.
Yes, they did.
They deserve the credit.
Paige was amazing at hounding them. So definitely. So all right, you guys have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 3.2, Mount Hood Jazz Festival Sponsorship. Dan Davy, Festival, Mount Hood Jazz Festival Director, I guess, at the Mount Hood Community College.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to share my screen here. This won't work. My sound is off. It's off. Hello? There we go. Okay, we did it. Hello, thank you so much for having me. I'm Dan Davy. I'm the Jazz Director of Mount Hood Community College. I run the Mount Hood Jazz Festival. I'm a Troutdale resident, Sandy Palisades neighborhood. And I've come, I've come here the last few years to talk about the Mount Hood Jazz Festival and the growth. I want tonight to talk about the growth that we've had in the last few years and also its impact on our community. We've been extremely appreciative in the past few years to have the support of the city of Troutdale as one of our sponsors for the festival. And I think it's important to let you know what we've been doing with the festival and where we're at now. And then ask for continued support at the end. So just to, in case you're unfamiliar with the festival's history, it began in 1982 at the college. It was produced by the city of Gresham and with collaboration of the Mount Hood Jazz Association, which was a nonprofit that started the festival. And their goal was to promote the appreciation of jazz as a unique art form. And it went through a few different struggles. And fast forward from 1982 to 2019, I started at the college in 2015 and started running a educational festival that had been running for a number of years for high schoolers and middle school students to come participate and perform and have clinics and feedback and master classes. And in 2019, the former Mount Hood Jazz Festival Association Board signed over the rights to the use of the festival name to the music program at Mount Hood Community College. And bringing this back to the college secured its future, in my opinion, and its longevity of its existence. Its new format is centered around education, combining ideas of what the festival used to be, which was all a professional festival, with the educational festival that we had been running for decades in addition. So it's centered around education, students, and our community, providing access to education and world-class musicians, deepening cultural events in our community, and engaging our community with local commerce. It educates and inspires the jazz audience and musicians of today and tomorrow. And we've created through this as our goal and our mission, a scaffolding effect for students who are attending the festival, who might be in middle school and they're performing and they're seeing high schoolers performing and they're seeing college students performing and they're seeing professionals performing. They can see the whole line ahead of them from middle school all the way to professional musician. And not only see and hear the music, but they can also attend hands-on master classes with these artists that they just saw on stage and find out how it is that they did what they just did on stage. So there's this integration of, you know, the professional world with educational world and having access and also a line of inspiration for these students. In the past few years, you know, 2019, it came back to the college. And then, of course, COVID wiped out everything for everybody for a long time. But slowly reopening after COVID, we've seen consistent growth in the last few years. And last year, the twenty, I consider it last year because it was last school year, and that's how I think. But it was the 2025 festival saw significant growth both in size and participation. We used to be a three-day festival and last, this past festival expanded to five days. We expanded our offerings in East County, in Troutdale, and in Gresham, offerings being master classes for, which are open to the public and free, and for students, as well as ticketed and free concerts in the community, some of which are held on our campus, but some of which are held in the community in Gresham and Troutdale. We also expanded into Portland last year through a partnership with the 1905 Jazz Club. And always pointing our audience towards East County. Like, if you're here for this event tonight, come out to the East County for tomorrow night's event and see what we have to offer with the rest of the festival. So lots of growth last year. I tried this last year. I have a video. It didn't work last year, but we'll see if it works. This is a highlight reel that shows a glimpse into what the festival was for 2025. And let's see if it works. So what you saw there is kind of a, just a glimpse at performances we had either in the community or on campus. Students that were performing or receiving clinics after their performance from professionals to perform better the next time that they perform. We also had food carts on campus. We also had a little market on campus and some outdoor music on campus as well. Lots of variety of events and a diverse lineup of artists and musicians. Something for everybody is kind of the hope of what we have. You can see, this is, these are the community sponsors and support. So it really is a community event. And of course, we're grateful, as I mentioned, for the support that the city of Troutdale has given us in the past in being able to make something like this happen for our community. And there's some additional businesses that also help with the festival. So in 2025, we had eighty school ensembles. And as this continues to grow, we're seeing that the net is being cast wider. So we have schools that are coming, it's becoming a little bit of a destination festival for schools. So Seattle schools, this year, we have a school from Idaho that's coming. And all of these schools that are coming from out of town are spending the night or two nights and they're attending concerts, they're staying in our hotels, they're eating food at our restaurants, and they're experiencing East County for the amount of time that they're here. We had about fifty music educators plus several student teachers. We offered twelve free master classes for students and the public. We had about thirteen hundred and fifty students attending. We're working this year to really identify a more concrete number of how many people those students that thirteen fifty bring with them. Because if they all brought one person with them, that doubles the number, of course. But with the free events, it's kind of hard to track. So we're working on ways to better do that this year. We offered in 2025, twenty-four professional concerts. And we have estimated that there is just over three thousand total in attendance at collectively at all the events that we were able to track. And then in addition, we have collaborations and sponsorships or connections with thirty-five businesses and municipalities. And thinking about the festival's relationship with the city of Troutdale, I did some research about what we are investing in into the city. And in 2025, a hundred percent of our festival catering came from restaurants in Troutdale. We had the Restaurante de Pompeo, Safeway, Burgerville, also Pizza Hut, which I forgot to put on here. So all of our catering and food sources came from Troutdale. We have, with all those eighty school ensembles that come, they, some of them are interested in eating on campus. Some of them are not interested in eating on campus and they want to go into the community. And we send them first to the Troutdale Station because that's the closest, easiest place for a school bus to drop off and everybody to eat what they need to eat and then get back. So we're pushing them towards Troutdale Station or food in Troutdale. Although now there's other food cart pods that are opening up too, which is great. And then for those schools that are staying overnight and need recommendations, we connect them with Best Western in Troutdale, the Comfort Inn and the Holiday Inn Express in Troutdale. We also use Courtyard Marriott, which is in Gresham, but we use that mostly for our artists and adjudicators. It's a little bit more expensive and these ones have more rooms for larger groups of people that come. So we're pushing them towards those places. And then, you know, the college in connection with Troutdale employs fifty four Troutdale residents, myself included, and we serve eight hundred and sixty-seven students from Troutdale. Each year, in the last few years, we've added a performance in Troutdale. So it started with just Troutdale Station in 2024. Last year, we added one at Wayfinder. And then this year, I've been working with the new wine bar in communications with them. That's going to open up in downtown Troutdale to have music there outside of the festival as well, because jazz and wine go together very well, but also during the festival as well. And then off campus, the community performances that we have, we had four in Gresham last year and we had three, or we will have three, sorry, this year, 2026, four in Gresham and three in Troutdale as well. Just as a general all call for anybody who's here or willing or interested or knows anybody, we do love to have volunteer we do love to have volunteer help to help the festival to be successful. It obviously can't just be me. There's a whole team of people that make this happen. So we have volunteer positions before, after and during the festival. So you can email us at jazzfestival@mecc.edu if you're interested in learning more. We're also on social media. And so that's the end of my presentation. I would, my, my ask is that you would consider this year sponsoring the festival at a continued amount from what you did last year, which was $7,500. And that way we can continue to grow and provide a robust experience for everybody who's attending, but also for our community as well.
All right. Well, thank you. Are there questions from the council? Or comments? Yeah.
I was just, I was curious what Gresham contributes.
That has changed each year. And so right now, I haven't, nothing yet. We usually get grants from them, either one or two grants, and the amounts have varied in the past few years. And without the number in front of me, last year collectively, I think two years ago collectively, I think it was 10,000 between two grants. Last year was, I think around seven.
Obviously it's growing.
Yeah, it is very exciting. It's a lot more work. Anybody wants to help?
What are the dates of it this year?
It'll be April 22nd through the 26th, 2026.
Have you guys done any economic studies to find out how much each family or each event generates?
No, but that's conversations that we're having now in hopes that we can do that.
It'd be interesting to know, like, what's the ROI? Like if a city or an agency sponsors your event, what benefit is that city getting from that sponsorship? And understanding what those families spent while they're here attending those restaurants, listening to the music at the bars, at the restaurants, what have you?
Right.
And then how that money is recirculated through the community?
Yes. I would, I'd be beneficial. Yeah, absolutely.
Question I had, you said volunteers. What, what are the volunteers doing?
It depends on what you want to do. We have some that are like outward facing, so anybody who's coming to participate or attend the festival, you're dealing with them. Or there's kind of, you know, the pre-festival planning, setting up. It could be from artist stages, it could be to selling merchandise, helping with ticket sales, helping with students as they arrive on campus or at any of the community events. We, we set out teams for each of those events that do the merchandise sales, they check tickets, they act as ushers for those events and representatives of the festival. There's cleanup crews, setup crews, cleanup crews. There's, we need drivers from, for a lot of the artists that fly into town, we provide ground transportation for them to and from the airport and also from the hotel to wherever venue that they're performing at. So we need drivers to be able to do those things too. So there's kind of, you know, we have, we have a form and say like, here's my strengths and we can kind of match it with here's our needs, you know, so.
Well, it certainly from your presentation and your, glad you could get the film to run this time, there's certainly an increase. I mean, one of our concerns was that it was mostly a Gresham event. The college is located in Gresham and, but we, we did make a generous donation last year. It, it, it's clear from your report that the participation of Troutdale businesses has increased and your use of Troutdale businesses has increased. And, and the events that you put on in Troutdale has also increased and we congratulate you for that. It, it's certainly a very worthy effort and helps a lot of kids and, and brings jazz to the area, which is much loved. So anyway, I, if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I'll open it to public comment before we decide. We're, we're being asked to donate $7,500.
Dave, I think Zach wanted to say something.
Yeah.
And I did not see a hand. Oh, now I do. Okay. And I appreciate that. And anytime I'm not seeing somebody, please call it out. Zach, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did want to, I think, point out, just based on Mike's comment, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Marley's last economic breakdown of what we kind of experienced throughout the year last year, did see a bit of a bump during the Jazz Festival. Not entirely positive on that. It would be good to circle back maybe and look at those meeting minutes or that presentation, but I just wanted to point that out, that it was making some form of impact on the people coming into town and spending money here, so.
All right. Good. Yeah. Eric.
Mr. Mayor.
I see you. Please, go ahead.
I wanted to jump up here and join Dan, just to share, there's typically questions from the council regarding what we've done in the past and budget questions. So I thought I would try and share some of that upfront. In 2022, the council had donated 5,000 as well as in 2023, 2024, 6,500. And then last year, last school year, as you put it, 2025 was 7,500. And then typically I get the question, well, is the money in the budget? And the answer is always a little bit confusing when I respond because the answer is yes and no. We have money in the budget for community events. It's the same bucket that Erica and Marley run, the First Fridays and the Windy Wonderland and the Farmer's Market. And we also have a reference to the city sponsored events, so like Art Festival or Cruisin', but we don't explicitly list community events and dollar amounts because it is an issue where we've always taken the position that staff doesn't want to be making those selections because over time, council's priorities may change, the experience, the prior year may have caused council to rethink things, whatever the case might be. So there's money in the budget, but there's not money in the budget specifically for Mount Hood Jazz Festival or any other city event, sponsored event for that matter. So I hope that helps clarify. And then just the final piece for the auditors, I just need a motion on, in the minutes that council approved or chose to donate, provide a sponsorship to Mount Hood Jazz Festival for X dollars. And that's what I use then to support the, the audit trail when they ask, well, why am I handing out taxpayer money? What was the, my authorization for that? And I can go to Sarah's minutes and say, right there on page four.
Sarah, I have a question. So we don't have like a, a dollar that says you can spend $20,000 for community events? That's our top? We don't have that? It's just open ended?
We have a budget that is prepared and presented in that category, just like all the other ones across the city. The city staff has a number of line items that they list with estimates based on that. Council Budget Committee then makes adjustments to that. Of course, the nature of what exactly gets spent on can change from year to year based on how the events turned out, what they may be choosing to do differently this year from that, from that year. But the authorization is based on what gets put into the adopted budget. So it isn't just whatever staff wants to spend. And then as, again, as it relates to cutting checks to an outside organization, it's based on the council making an explicit decision for that.
Is there a number on our budget for that amount?
Well, for all of those different events that I talked about, the First Fridays, Windy Wonderland, the Farmer's Market, city sponsored events, a year ago's budget was 100,000. This, this current year's adopted budget, it was reduced to 96. So that's what, again, Marley and Erica and her team produce all of those First Friday events, all of, all of that out of that same bucket.
All right. Well, thank you, Eric. Any other questions?
So how much have we spent out of last year's budget?
I didn't think to bring that with me. I'm sorry.
Well, council can ask questions afterwards, but let, let me open it to public comment. We are considering a donation to the Mount Hood Jazz Festivals as a sponsor. The ask by the Jazz Festival is $7,500, the same amount we gave last year. So that's the issue. And I, does anyone, let's start with Zoom. Anybody out in Zoom wish to make public comment on this matter?
Mayor Rittman, Paul Cockstrel deal?
Yes, Paul.
Okay, this is going to be a bit of a downer, but that's okay. I don't have a problem anyway. Considering that the Public Safety Utility Fee was implemented due to the impacts to the General Fund of increased police and fire costs, it is inappropriate to continue to make unnecessary donations to private event sponsors as a business as usual practice. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Anybody else on Zoom wish to address the council? Let me ask if anybody in the council chambers wishes to address the council on this matter? All right. Well, the matter is before us and what we'd need to do is have a motion from someone on the council authorizing the, a sponsorship of the Mount Hood Jazz Festival. The amount can be whatever the counselor wants to make in the motion, but the ask is for 7,500. Is there anybody, do I have a motion? Is anybody interested?
I'd just like to say something. I think this provides a great opportunity to a lot of Troutdale citizens, Gresham citizens. And, you know, when I was watching the video, I saw a lot of young kids getting into music, which is a lifelong experience that they'll take with them well beyond this. So my concern would be if we don't make another generous donation, Mount Hood might find someone that does and then they start recommending their restaurants and, you know, you know, their services. And I think we have $95,000 set aside for these kind of opportunities and I think this is something that is worthy for that. I just wanted to say that before.
So Jesse, is that a motion to approve?
We're still discussing, Dave, so.
I'm just asking.
So I remember sitting last year in the chamber saying, you asked 7,500. I remember saying that if it saves one kid, it's worth it. Being on this end, I still want to say it's worth it. My concern is just budget. So as you can see, I'm kind of torn because I think if it saves one kid, that's, it's worth 7,500, it just is. Whether we can, can try to afford it or move things around, if it saves one kid. And I'm just.
Well, I, I'll, I'll say that we, we don't have to decide tonight. We're being asked tonight to make this donation. Unless somebody wants to move that we don't do it, we, we still could at a future council meeting. Apparently Gresham has not stepped up yet, so we're not, we wouldn't be the only one. I just point that out. I.
Dave, I'll.
Yes.
Say that I, I echo what Jesse and Carol both said. But I also want to, part of my thought process behind this was something that Paul said and I echo that also. And a lot of difficult choices and decisions that we have to make throughout the year that really, that impact our budget. Our budget is by no means small, but it's by no means large like other larger cities. But I do think that things like this are things that we can do to help support our community and also support the communities around us. I think that Dan did a good job of showing where they're funneling people to, whether he's doing that because it's easiest or because he's a member of this community that lives in Troutdale. They could just as easy say, go the opposite direction. The freeway is right here. I think that in light of, as Paul said, and Jesse and Carol, I feel like this is a good use of our budget to highlight our city and support something that is like educational, it's entertainment and bring things to our city. So in light of my rambling, I make a motion that we approve a $7,500 donation to the Mount Hood Jazz Festival.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I was going to make a comment before the motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Just that, you know, I like how Gresham's handling it, that they were doing it with a grant and we have a grant writer, so maybe we should pursue that avenue because money is tight for everyone. We've had people in tears over the $15 fee come in and testify. And Dan, you've worn me down too and I appreciate your efforts on including Troutdale a great deal because it's, it's becoming a Troutdale event as well. And there are students and I was in band, I love band and I have, I have appreciation for music to this day because of being in band. I didn't go anywhere with it, but I did, I really enjoyed it, you know? I know Dave said we could wait. I don't like the idea that we're going to have to explain to Troutdale that we're donating at 7,500 more than Gresham is and they're doing it through a grant. So, you know, I've, I've been the no vote on it for a long time, but I, I'm hearing what Carol has to say and I'm seeing kids in general struggling these days and, you know, I appreciate the job you're doing for our kids, so. That said, maybe we should, maybe we should talk to Bill Peterson if it's, how much time do we have to get a grant going?
Well, all right, I have a comment about changing it to a grant. The, the, the issue to me would be a grant would be the type of thing that Mr. Davy's presentation would be able to support. I, I think that there's, there's enough help to local businesses, hotels, restaurants, the fact that the festival presents. the fact that the festival presents events in Troutdale would all justify a grant. But a grant, to turn it into a grant takes staff time to analyze a series, I mean, it would be a grant, I also puzzle if, if we're gonna, we're gonna consider grants to worthy musical events, I mean, the Mount Hood Festival of Jazz is, would be the only, I shouldn't say the only one, but it, it certainly would be able to make a case for the grant. I think if we're prepared to donate this amount of money, putting out a grant that will take a lot of, I would argue, staff time to analyze and, and a lot of people would have to spend a lot of effort. I, anyway, Glenn, I, I hadn't thought of that and, but I don't think there's anything wrong if we are of a mind to donate to the Jazz Festival, to do it this way rather than through a grant. I, I think it would, it would be perfectly fair to do it this way. I guess I'm saying I, I'm in favor because it's such a worthy cause and does a lot for Troutdale. This is a tough time to do it, but anyway, I'm expressing myself. Anybody else want to weigh in before we, we do have a motion and a second, so, and the motion is to donate 7,500. Counselor Andrews, did you want to say something?
Sure, yeah. I, in lieu of voting no on something that has such a positive, positive impact as everyone has pointed out, and given the fact that it is a difficult time here coming up as well as right now for the city, I was considering the fact that we might make a donation, but maybe lower the amount, just to kind of reflect, obviously, the somewhat of a bind that we're in to maybe the previous year's amount of, I believe it was 6,500 is what Eric had mentioned, or even 5,000 for the year before. That way we're still giving, we're still contributing, but some food for thought is kind of a middle ground there to still give something, but maybe not quite as much given our current objectives.
All right. That, that could be handled. One way would be to ask if the mover of the motion and seconder would accept Counselor Andrews' amendment, say, well, take your pick, either 6,500 or 5,000 instead of 7,500. Otherwise, we could, we could put it to a vote as an amendment to the motion, but if the counselor, if Jeffrey or Carol, if you are willing to go to a smaller amount, we wouldn't have to do that.
John wanted to say something, so I'd like to hear that.
Yes, go ahead, John.
My question is, could we authorize, whatever the amount is, 6,500, 7,500, and that's a guarantee that you would get the money, but still go after a grant to cover it instead of taking on a budget?
To grant something that like he would do on his end to like. I feel like, if I feel like a grant is something that the entity that is putting on something or that wants something, that's something that they would do on their own, I don't know like why Gresham was giving you a grant or how that works from their city perspective. They're a larger city. I'm imagining they have more resources to do things like that. That's just in my mind, that's what I'm talking, and I, my wife does, for her nonprofit, does grants and has our grant writer, and they take care and do that stuff. It's a lot of work, like Dave did mention. I was just going to say, Zach, I hear what you're saying, and I, like I kind of echoed that from Paul's comment, I think $1,000 in the grand scheme of, of everything doesn't, doesn't move the needle with me. We have this already in our budget set aside, so not to like be rude, I'm not, I'm not willing to like move my motion, I guess.
All right. Well, we have a motion and second on the floor, and Zach, are you making a motion to amend the amount? And we then, if there's a second, we could vote on that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend the amount to $5,000 given to the Jazz Festival, unless Mike has something to.
Yeah, I would say before we can do that, we have a motion and a second on the table, so parliamentary procedures say that we need to vote on the motion that's on the table now.
No, 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 Mike, Mike, I don't think it works like that. We've always, we've always done it this way. There, there's a motion and a second, and we're amending the motion. I think this is proper. I'm sure.
Motioner have to, anybody can amend it?
No, no, this is a way, if the, if there, there could be a motion to amend the original motion, which needs a second, and then if it's seconded, the, there's a vote on whether to amend the initial vote, and then a vote on the motion.
It, it's the way we've always done it, and I, it's proper, I'm sure. So Zach has made a motion to still make a donation to the, but to amend the current motion, which specified 7,500 as the donation, to reduce it to 5,000. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Without further discussion, we'll, we'll vote then on Zach's amendment, and if it passes, we'll then vote on the original motion at the amount of 5,000. Sarah, call the roll.
Okay. Counselor Allen?
No.
Counselor One?
No.
Mayor Rittma?
No.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
No.
Counselor Leamy?
No.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Well, it'll be nice that we'll be the main sponsor, even though it's in Gresham.
Then it's appropriate to move.
Sarah, I, I did not hear, I did not hear that vote. Could you just, who, how did it come out?
The motion failed two to five.
Okay. All right, we're back to the original motion on the floor, which was Jeffrey's motion, Carol seconded it for, to make the donation at the amount of 7,500. Unless there's further discussion, Sarah, please call the roll.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Leamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
No.
As is six to one.
Well, Mr. Davy, we have responded. Anyway, thank you for your presentation and best of luck with the festival this year.
Thank you so much.
We'll, we'll move on to agenda item 4.1. It's a public hearing, an introduction of an ordinance to adopt updated town center overlay on the comprehensive plan and zoning maps and comprehensive plan text amendments for Troutdale. Erica? Oh, wait a minute, this is a public hearing. I, I have a script that was given to me, so let me just rattle this off. Erica, hang on. We're introducing an ordinance to adopt updated town center overlay and comp plan and zoning maps and the comp plan text amendments for Troutdale. The first thing we're going to do is have the staff conduct the first reading of this ordinance by short title only. Mike, we may, we may amend this to make it a little clearer, but anyway, I, I'll let you read the title, Erica, and then I'll go on to the public hearing.
Sure. So the short title is just going to be Town Center Overlay Amendments.
All right. Now I'll say, the public hearing of a legislative ordinance to adopt updated town center overlay on the comp plan, comprehensive plan and zoning maps and comprehensive plan text amendment is now called to order. And the first thing is, does any council member wish to announce any actual or potential conflicts of interest or ex-party contacts? And that would be for councilors and hearing none. Mike, you have, you're having me, does anyone in the audience object to the authority of this body to hear this matter? All right. I think we do have authority here. So at this point, Erica, would you give the staff report?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm Erica Palmer, Community Development Director, and tonight we have some proposed amendments regarding the town center overlay on our zoning map and comprehensive plan map, and also some text amendments to our comprehensive plan itself. Tonight's the first reading of this ordinance. We will have a second reading at the first council meeting in November, November 18th, I believe. And so tonight, we're going to hold a public hearing. We're going to review and take public text, public testimony on amendments dealing with the town center overlay boundary on the zoning map and comprehensive plan map and text amendments. And really what this comes down to in really simple terms, this is just a mapping cleanup exercise. So the history here is when the city council adopted the town center plan in 2022, the town center overlay was updated. It removed three parcels from that boundary. It removed the two McMinniman's parcels that are just north of the Great Edgefield Site and the Troutdale Animal Hospital. And you might ask, well, why did that happen in 2022? Why did they remove those three parcels? I wasn't here at that time, but I did a little bit of investigation, and the current Edgefield Site is not in the town center boundary. And I think the reasoning behind it, let's make all of those parcels the same, they're all owned by the same owner, and having the animal hospital within the town center overlay and where that parcel is located just doesn't make a lot of sense. So that's the reason those three parcels were removed from the town center overlay in 2022. So we're just going through the legal planning process here of making all of these maps current with the 2020, 2040 Town Center Plan Map. And here's the town center boundary that was adopted in the town center plan. So this shows on the left-hand side our current 2019 comp plan map, so you can see, I know I have a really bad picture, but that blue line takes into account those three parcels on the north side of the current Edgefield Campus, and our proposed change is to remove those parcels, so it is the exact same as our 2020, 2040 Town Center Map. And the same goes for our zoning map. And so what are the implications of approving this request? All maps will be in order, so our 2020, 2040 Town Center Map will be the same as our zoning map and comprehensive plan map, and the updated text in our comp plan will reflect what that boundary is and reflect some of that language that's in our current Town Center Plan itself. This is really good planning practice. So the request, it does not change the underlying zoning for those, for any parcels. The three parcels that were taken out of the town center boundary, those are still zoned general commercial and will remain general commercial. All the land uses will remain the same, the parking will remain the same. I know parking comes up a lot, so I just wanted to address that issue. And then all the McMinniman's own parcels will be outside of the town center overlay, making all of these parcels consistent and having the same land use regulations. I did reach out to McMinniman's to let them know this was going through the public hearing process to change this boundary illegally on our land use maps, and they didn't have any objections. And I let them know how they could provide comment to the Planning Commission and to the city council, but we haven't received any public comments from them. And I'm assuming it's because they didn't have any objections to this change. So with that, this is a type four land use application. The Planning Commission held a hearing on October 8th and recommended the city council approve the proposed amendments that are in your packet. We did send out public engagement notice, did send out notices by law, and we also did some public engagement on our website as well. We did, we had, we didn't receive any public comment at the Planning Commission meeting, but we did receive a public comment from our Metro Senior Planner, and he just wanted to let us know that the proposed amendments do meet the early program functional plan through Metro, which is great because we don't want to be out of compliance with that plan. So the proposed findings are fact, or in your staff report, all criteria have been found to be met by the Troutdale Planning Commission. And with that, I will answer any questions we may have.
So the area, the area in question is already designated Town Center, right? And then we're actually taking area out of the Town Center?
We're taking three parcels out of the Town Center Boundary.
Just the property that is owned by Ed, Ed Schill?
Yes. And Multnomah County, which is the animal shelter.
All right. At this time, there's any questions from the council of staff?
I have one, Dave.
Sure. Go ahead.
Because I was, it feels made aware that that'll reduce their density by not being on, because the town center has an overlay that has the highest density in the city. I know the last time I think they talked about that property was they were trying to, they wanted to do.
It shouldn't reduce their density just because it's zoned, zoned general commercial, and everything within the general commercial area, zoning land use designations and zoning table will remain the same.
But if, if you were in the town center, then it get, the density increases. That'd been the old, old one I'm thinking of.
Could I ask really quick, what is the density in our?
In our general commercial?
Residential density in general?
So in the general commercials zoning, I don't have my development code with me at this exact time, but I don't, I think maybe you can do multifamily, but even then I don't think you can because it's general commercial. And Ed's shaking his head yes, but he's been here a lot longer than I have.
Multifamily would be a conditional use, and I couldn't tell you what it is.
So they would still have multifamily, they would still have mixed-use commercial?
Yes.
Still have?
Yes.
Okay. But the density on that, like it's, doesn't necessarily, it's not like an eight T24 or any of that?
Not residential. Yeah.
You know, because we got these maps, I was, I was looking at some of the properties, and I knew how some of them were, were previously zoned, and now they're, it's a different zoning, like some areas in the town center have, have lost their commercial designation, and now it's high-density residential. So I'm just wondering, you know, I don't think those properties were notified. I think we were told it was because of CFEC rules and changes is why it occurred. And I know I watch a lot of the planning meetings, and they, they've been bringing up making, adding commercial back to some of those properties, any comments on that. I know it's not specifically on the agenda, but that'd be a good time to ask you that question.
Are there particular parcels downtown that you're thinking of?
Yeah, the ones shaded, the ones that are now designated as, in brown, high-density residential, and a lot of those used to have a commercial designation, and they're right on the main drag of town, too. That's why it turns me that they're no longer designated commercial. It's hard to see, they're kind of across from the Twin Museum, the art.
So that's 2019.
Between the art center and the, I guess there's a pump station by that bridge that goes across Beaver Creek.
So we, I know for a fact that we did not change any underlying zoning designations with this particular section. So what is, the only thing that is changed is that slash, that little dotted line. So what is, the only thing that is changed is that slash, that little dotted line, like around the town center. That's the only thing that's changing.
Counselor, I think in looking at the maps here, the, in 2019, they were zoned commercial, but in 2022, they became zoned high-density residential. So they've been that way for about three years now. Changeover took place. And that's in the packet, those maps are in there, but.
I think it happened without notice. Is there a possibility of that?
No, I believe that was with notice back in 2022. Trying to remember which ordinance it was that did it, but that was when Chris Damgon was the director and I, he was pretty careful about giving the notices to the landowners.
So it's now all mixed use downtown? The 22 map or is it?
It's this brown high-density.
I was talking, this one along the main strip, yeah, the main strip looks pink and purple. I like that purplish blue.
This is 22.
Yeah.
This is the current one here.
And that's MU1 downtown. And then, and it was commercial, right? It was general commercial in 2019? It looks like.
22, it moved to MU1. Mixed use, yes. The commercial went to mixed use also in 2022.
But I've been hearing, planning's been talking a lot about adding the commercial aspect back into those properties.
In mixed use commercials, all is allowed.
Right, so in mixed use commercials, definitely allow.
It's, I think the mixed use generally looks at commercial on the main floor with more residential above. The MU1.
100% accurate.
So, so the commercial has never been disallowed. It was just to add a layer of residential above.
So does that mean our, our buildings are higher?
I think there's still.
So, so right now, we're going through, we have a grant to kind of look at that and to discuss that with planning commission to, to see what areas possibly in the town center, you could have increased building height due to mixed use development.
So, but right now it's 35 feet.
Correct. So they're having those conversations right now. And any proposed future amendments would come back to the city council.
I think the, as I remember, the last time Edgefield was in here talking about that property, they were wanting to do like, having it like a hobbit village with a lot of farm activity and growing crops and raising chickens and things like that. And we changed the zoning at that time to allow that.
There is an active farm on one of the, on one of the lots. Yeah.
And, and we did at their request, add agricultural uses to the, the general commercial, I believe it was, zone. That's eight, eight or nine years ago.
Yeah, I love that idea. Sorry to get off track. Thanks, Erica.
Sometimes tying the pieces together chronologically helps.
Yeah.
Other questions from the council? If not, I will call for public testimony. This is a public hearing. So at this time, the council will hear any public testimony on this ordinance. When called upon, please state your name and the city in which you reside for the record. So I'll open it to public comment. We tried, I think the last time, to have proponents and opponents, but I'm just going to open it to public comment, both in favor or opposed or neutral on this matter. And I'll start with what we're considering. This is a first reading. We are not adopting it tonight, but we are, this is a public hearing and this is the time to give public testimony. In fact, it's necessary for the record if someone should want to appeal to go on record. So I'll open it to public comment. Let's start with online. Anyone online wish to comment on this matter, which is an ordinance adopting a diff, updated town center overlay on the comp plan zoning maps and the comprehensive plan text amendments? All right, seeing no one, I'll open it to any public comment from inside the council chambers. Anyone wish to address the council on this matter? It's a public hearing. All right, hearing none, I will close the public comments at this public hearing. Does the staff have anything more or does council have any more questions? And hearing nothing. The, I'll, I'll close the public testimony. This item will be considered, continued to the November 18th city council agenda for council deliberations, consideration of adoption and the second reading. That closes out this agenda item. We'll move on to agenda item 4.2. This is council deliberation and second reading of an ordinance to adopt development code amendments to allow for the creation of historic districts. This was introduced on October 14th and this is now the second reading. The procedure does not require that we reopen the public hearing. We've had one and that's all that's required. However, as is traditional in Troutdale, I'm going to make sure that we allow public comment if anyone has any. So at this time, we'll have a second reading from the staff. And is that you, let's see, who's this? That's Erica again. So please proceed.
It's an ordinance to adopt development code text amendments to allow for the creation of a historic district.
Thank you. Erica, did you, yes, all right, good.
Good evening. I have no new additional information to provide to you. Based on discussion last meeting, there was concerns about not being noticed if you're a property owner. All I can say is rest assured, by the time the actual district application gets to you all, we will have set out mailers, we'll have our website updated, we'll be canvassing door to door. So this won't happen without anyone's knowledge. Yeah, that's it.
Erica, and thank you, Nick. Erica, did you have anything else?
That is it.
All right. Well, this is the second reading of this ordinance and the ordinance is up for adoption. I will entertain, before I entertain a motion, I will invite public comment, if any, from, let's start. This is the ordinance adopting development code amendments to allow for the creation of historic districts. Any public comment from out in Zoom on this matter? We will be voting on it tonight. Okay, hearing none. Oh, Frank, did you have a comment? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the work the staff has done on this as well as just highlight the fact that this really reflects the values of Troutdale. So I would definitely be in favor of this proposal. And it, it says a story. I mean, it's as simple as just saying hi when people come into town. And I know when I'm drinking coffee at River Cafe, that's one of the first stories I tell them is, why is it called Hungry Hill? I think you guys are really on to something that will help make this area a destination location and at the same time, reflect the local culture that is here historically as well. Thank you.
And Frank, if you wouldn't mind, please state your name and the city where you live.
Frank Stevens, Troutdale, Oregon. Thank you.
Frank Stevens, thank you. All right, anyone else in the council chambers?
Mayor Rethma, Paul O'Koxtrodt.
Oh, Paul, yeah, please, go ahead.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, let's see. I missed the last meeting, so I had to carry this over. I listened to the comments and concerns presented at the first hearing. This ordinance simply provides the process for establishing a historic district. There were references to Hungry Hill in particular in the findings, criterion D, which I regret approving in the planning commission. There are any number of areas in Troutdale where a historic district could be designated since the age threshold is so low at 50 years. There may be residents of a so-called historic district who may be concerned that being in same would apply restrictions on how they might be allowed to modify their properties. Realize that the ordinance states that there will be no such restrictions. Still, historic can have negative connotations such as structures with lead pipes or asbestos insulation and aging infrastructure in general. Then, of course, there is the added expense to the city of the proposed sign toppers for the Hungry Hill area. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else? This is the second reading of the ordinance. All right. Well, I'll end the public comment period. And is there any further discussion from the council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
If we adopt an ordinance to adopt development code amendments to allow for the creation of historic districts.
All right, if there's no further discussion, Sarah, please call a roll.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor One. Mayor Rethma.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor Leeny.
Yes.
And Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item 4.3. Council deliberation and second reading of an ordinance amending chapters 12.01, 12.05 of the Troutdale Municipal Code pertaining to Public Works Code violations and public sidewalk maintenance. Travis? Let, let me see, hold, hold on, I think I have a script here, just one second. Hold on. This, 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 by the way, was introduced at the October 14th meeting. This is the second reading. And so the second reading of an ordinance amending chapters 12.01 and 12.05 of the Troutdale Municipal Code pertaining to Public Works Code violations and public sidewalk maintenance is now called to order. Public testimony on this matter was held at the October 14th matter, so it is now closed. However, I will invite public comment as is usual with me. The council will now consider this item an open deliberation among counselors to consider its adoption, but let's start with the staff report. Travis?
I delivered an extensive staff report on this topic at the last meeting. I did answer a few of the questions from last meeting in my updated staff report. And really the only thing I'll mention as far as a change that was made in the text of the proposed ordinance was to add back the 30-day extension. That was a request by the council at the last meeting. With that, I have nothing else to add to my written staff report.
I have a couple of questions. I appreciate the numbers in here, that was great. My first question is, it says horizontal cutting is, is obviously much cheaper. Is there rules around, around when you can horizontal cut?
Yes.
You can't?
Yes, there are, we have a standard for that. Basically, basically if it would result in the sidewalk being less than two inches thick, that is too big of a vertical separation to perform horizontal cutting under our standard. So, and sidewalks are generally three and a half to four inches thick. So it just, you know, you can imagine how much of a separation that would take. So usually it's for the lesser, you know, they're, they're, they're hazard, they're a problem, but they're not the big, you know, nasty ones that you see out there. That, that's, at that point, it's a removal release.
And when the city comes after a complaint is driven to say the sidewalk is not lying, you, at that point, you notify them, but you notify them of their options of like, hey, this one is available for horizontal cutting if you want to do that.
We don't lay out specific options for each case, on a case-by-case basis, but in our standard letters that go out, our templates, we've developed those over a long period of time and lots of experience. And one of those paragraphs in there talks about, there can be alternative methods for preparing your details depending on the circumstances. If you'd like to explore alternatives, please, please contact, contact information for one of our hearing decks.
And they'll come out and kind of give you, hey, you could.
We consult with people on that regularly, yeah.
My next question is, basically this is going to revolve around the permit fee, so just bear with me. Since this is a complaint-driven thing, and the permit fee, it could be potentially a quarter of the cost based on this like $750 number. And somebody has to go out anyways to assess this complaint, right? I guess what, I'm wondering if we can waive the permit fees for these complaint-driven sidewalk fixes? If someone's going to fix it? And they play like, if you send the letter out and be like, hey, you need to fix your sidewalk, like I'm going to do that myself, you're like, you have to get a permit to do that. They fix it without having to have the city do it. Can they have the permit fee waived by being a good citizen and addressing this when told since it is complaint-driven as opposed to mandatory? I mean, it's mandatory, but like, if you get my?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if the council wanted to do that, we actually have a fee schedule update coming up, so that would be a good time maybe to work that in. You know, the, the public works permit fee is in that fee schedule. So you could insert, you know, some exceptions or caveats for that. That is something we've talked about in the past, when we've talked about different approaches to sidewalk programs. Usually when we've talked about waiving permit fees, it was when someone voluntarily wants to fix their sidewalk. Right? Because one of the situations you could have is say, okay, you ignored your sidewalk problem. Someone complained, someone maybe even tripped and hurt themselves. We're going to make you fix it, but we're, but, but because we're making you, we're going to waive the permit fee. As opposed to someone who's looking at their sidewalk and says, oh, this sidewalk's a problem, I should fix this. I'm going to be a responsible landowner and fix this voluntarily. And then they have to pay the permit fee, right? So you can see how there might be a value judgment.
Yeah, I hear you. That makes perfect sense. I'm just trying to think of ways, since it, just because it's complaint-driven, if they do it and the city doesn't have to take it over, like that's what this is. The city has to take it over, like your penalty is you have to pay this permit fee in addition to the cost of whatever it is. Trying to think of ways to encourage them to take care of it themselves. And that's just to throw that out there.
Sure, and, and that's one of the reasons we considered, you know, having some sort of fee waiver if you step up and just voluntarily fix your sidewalk. We've talked about that in the past.
Can I just ask a quick question here? Because in my, I'm going through my head, like, why do we have fees, right? We have fees to pay for our staff time and the time of our engineers to double check and inspectors and everybody else. So on a typical sidewalk like this, how much staff time goes into going out, reviewing the permit, reviewing the design, onsite inspections and signing off on this?
About $125 worth. That fee was actually developed based on looking at average number of inspections on public works permits. And, and my recollection is that a typical sidewalk case would fall kind of right in the strike zone there. So it's, it's an average. So it's, it's an average, you know, the permit fee, some take a little more effort, some take a little less. But I'd say those sidewalk cases, assuming that they get, get through it in two, maybe three inspections, which would be typical, that's going to land right in that hundred and twenty-five dollar zone in terms of the time to process the permit, go out and do the inspections, you know. We don't charge anything for the investigation of the complaint or any of that, you know, it's just the actual permit fee like any other right away permit.
Uh, thank you. That was very helpful. Thank you for your, I appreciate the time. I just, I'm going to just add that I agree with, if someone wants to voluntarily do it, I feel like that permit should be waived if they're just going to take care of it. That's just me. I'm just gonna, I'm done.
Other questions from the council?
I've got a few, Dave.
All right.
So, um I was wondering what the mo- mobilization cost would be. Is that like a fee just to come to the job site?
Yeah, that's typical for any contractor. They're going to have a mobilization cost. There's, you know, that sort of is like their overhead, their, their getting their equipment there, the materials, all those sorts of things. Different contractors are going to apportion that different ways in, in their, in their bids, but you generally would figure, depending on the project, it's going to run ten, twenty percent of the rest of the contract project.
And administration costs. Wasn't a number given for that? Is that, is that the permit you're talking about, or?
Well, you're referring to when we were to, when we issue a proposed assessment, it would be the actual cost that the city paid plus administrative costs. That's like the city's overhead for managing everything. And the, the way the ordinance is written, that would be determined by the finance director.
And um what, what is the difference between the new um Oregon, Oregon standard specification versus the APWA specs?
Oh, gosh, so many. Yeah, I mean, the APWA specs kind of went by the wayside back in the two thousands when the Oregon standard specifications first came out. And at first, the Oregon standard specifications were a little bit lean on the utility side because ODOT is a road agency and they don't really do utilities all that much. So it took a while. APWA and Oregon, and ODOT were supposed to jointly get together to make that Oregon standard spec because many agencies followed the APWA Oregon spec prior to the public works agencies. But the idea was, well, let's get it all together in one roof, so everybody's got a, you know, kind of a same standard spec across the state or default spec at least. And um they did that, but the first couple versions of it were not the greatest on the utility side. Be honest with you, but over time, they, they caught up on that and that's, that's, that's the common spec for pretty much everybody. APWA Oregon section stopped producing Oregon spec years ago.
So does it cost the person that's um, if you have to go to the lien, is there, is there a charge for putting a lien on, on their property and then a charge for removing it?
Well, um there is no charge built into this ordinance, like a, like a, like a lien fee built into the ordinance. But standard lien processing may have fees associated with it. And uh, I don't know if Mr. Trumpki knows the answer to that or not.
Don't off the top of my head, no.
I mean, most, most processes, there's some administrative fee, you know. Um, if you're going to go down and record something at the county recorder's office, like record a lien, um, there's probably recording probably not that much, but there is one.
And then um, what if somebody is willing to do it? Um, they want to hire their own person to do it. But there's a scheduling conflict. They can't do it in the ninety days. Are they still going to be subject, or if they, if they can prove, hey, this is the soonest I can get it done and I'm, I'm planning on having it done? Seems like there should be a um some leniency there.
Well, we, as I said in my staff report, when, when we have good evidence that someone's working in good faith and we don't think they're going to go that far past the deadline, we will stretch it. But we've also seen that bite the city, you know, back. So the people will seem like they're acting in good faith, or they'll show us that they have a quote from a contractor and then we wait and wait and wait and wait and nothing happens. And then, you know, months go by sometimes and then eventually, you know. We, one of the, if you recall, the, when, the last time the city did a major update on this ordinance, one of the problems we were having is that we just kept giving people more and more grace and grace and things weren't getting done. And they were dragging out for sometimes over a year. And it just was not acceptable. And the council at that time basically said, okay, it's going to be sixty days with a thirty day extension and that's it, period, full stop. Um, and even so, we had cases, well, I'm only going to be a week or two past. Okay, we'll stretch it, stretch it, stretch it, you know, but.
All right.
That becomes a big problem if you, it's a slippery slope, let me put it that way.
If we adopt this, it's kind of putting more um work on, on your department. Do you have sufficient staff now to cover that?
Yeah, we think so. I've talked about this with the engineering staff and the engineering tech particularly, who would probably get the bulk of this. And uh, we think we can use that. That was one of the first questions I talked to them about when we first considered this, was, you know, if, if we do this, you know, are you going to have the bandwidth for it? And he felt he, he does. Um, and they talked about in my staff report, yes, there's going to be some more effort, but we're going to save some effort on one hand because we're not going to be going to any court appearances, we're not going to be spending in ordinance amount of administrative time on these lingering cases that never get resolved. And the balance of that extra time, in my opinion, is worth it. Because it's going to be better for landowners and the sidewalks are going to get fixed more timely.
So let's say you're doing like ten feet of sidewalk. What, what are you guys looking for, for a finished product? Because I know if they're off by half an inch from one end to the other, are they going to have to redo it or? Because I, I have no cases where some, some of the people I know, their contractors had to redo uh a section of sidewalk because and it was off by just a.
Typically have to deal with ADA specs. And so if somebody's going to do an ADA ramp, we would highly recommend that they have it inspected pre-pour so that our engineers can get out there with the, because they have their uh levels that have a bubble on it, they'll tell you exactly.
You're absolutely right. Like, um, I mean, when it comes to eighty, ADA things, ADA uh work, the tolerances are very strict, they're very tight. There's really no, you know, there's no going over at all. That's why things like, when you get into things like slope standards, we always recommend where possible that you actually undershoot it. So like, for instance, the maximum cross slope on a sidewalk is two percent. We always recommend a format of one and a half. Um, that's, that way, if, if, you know, those little tiny construction variations, you're not going to be in trouble because if under ADA, if you're two point one, it's no good, rip it out and do it again. That's how strict it is. Now, when you get into things like uh, like what Mike referred to earlier, if you're talking like sidewalk width, for instance, we, you know, the standard width, we have two inspections. We have a forms inspection that's required. So we are out there checking the forms to make sure you've formed it to the right dimensions before you pour it. You know, that's, that's one of the ways that an inspection is not just regulatory, it's a service. You know, um, it's a service. You're paying that permit fee for it to help make sure you get it right.
And that usually comes into play when you're doing like a driveway apron. That's where you can get in trouble.
Yeah, all right. I called a, a local. I, I, I thought the sidewalks were four feet wide, so I told them ten feet by four feet. And he quoted a price of sixteen hundred dollars um plus the hundred and twenty-five dollar permit. And then I called the Troutdale Sand and Gravel because they're local, you know, usually concrete, the closer you can get it, the cheaper it's going to be. And they said that there'd be a half yard uh of material, but they have a three yard minimum, so the concrete is going to be eight hundred dollars. So the estimates are quite a bit different than, than what.
Or going by recent unit prices we've had in, in actual bitted projects.
They must have the ability to mix the concrete themselves or something like that rather than buying it.
Well, for short loads, um, you'll have contractors, you know, they have all the, all different ways of approaching that. They, they, they might, they might mix on site. For small jobs, that's acceptable because you don't have any concrete submissions, you don't, you don't have mixed design tickets you have to submit. Or they'll have multiple jobs in one day, you know, they'll, they'll try to line up a multiple load so they don't have to do a short load.
I think that's where the savings come, right there. It's like that last piece.
That's where people go get four degrees in construction engineering management.
Those were good answers. Thank, thanks Travis.
Other questions? I had asked um at the last hearing, Travis, uh, for, I mean, right now, we don't uh, other than take people to court, we don't actually contract for sidewalk repairs and, which is fine. That's why this is being proposed. It, a streamlined system for getting the job done uh for public safety. Uh, I understand that. I was wondering how many uh pending reported defective sidewalks that we have had to ask that they be repaired um and have had to take the current steps that we have. I wondered how many of those are outstanding right now and you were going to give me some numbers on that if you could.
Well, they're in my staff report, Counselor Rittma.
And I'm sorry if I missed it, but I just didn't notice it.
There's a, there's a chart and uh the first page.
Oh, the chart. Oh, well, I did see the chart. I guess interpret, eh, so in twenty twenty-three, we had what, eleven unresolved cases in in twenty twenty-four, we had six and twenty twenty-five, we have five. Is that what? I didn't know how to, I didn't know how to interpret that.
So if you, the, on that chart, the, the blue line, the solid blue line represents the total number of cases this year. The, and then on the bars, uh, the, the total bar is also the total number of cases. The, the blue were cases that met their deadline. Either they're met the deadline, the orange are cases that went past their deadline but did get resolved. Whereas they eventually fixed it. Um, and then the green are cases that to this day remain unresolved. So you can see there's like one from twenty twenty-three that still hasn't been resolved and there's about uh three, two or three that remain unresolved compared to this year out of about seventeen.
Um, I mean, looking at the chart, okay. Just, so I understand, in twenty twenty-three, there were about three. In twenty twenty-four, it looks like there were none. Is that right?
That doesn't mean that they didn't, the orange represents cases that went past their deadline, but they eventually resolved it.
Okay, and then twenty twenty-five, there's four or five or something like that.
In, in current year, there's two or three that currently have gone past their deadline and have not been resolved. There have been ten or so that have gone past their deadline, but then eventually did get resolved. They went to, where they, they managed to complete the work after their deadline, otherwise.
No, okay, good. That's what I needed. That's what I wanted to know. It's not hundreds or it's, it is a problem. It is a uh, this is a, I think, a, a fair and equitable way to handle those problems. Which is why I think this looks like a good change, but I, I needed to know that. Uh, Zach, I see you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I uh wanted to thank you, Travis. It looks like you covered a lot of the bases that we brought up last time and included in your report. Um, wanted to know how specifically uh the aforementioned like repayment option would work with the city. I know you said you were going to talk with Eric about it, see if it was even feasible. You had mentioned that you are, you uh made a provision to uh provide that. I just was curious as to like how that looks at this point.
Well, the, the originally presented ordinance, after I went back and looked at it, actually allows for that. So the, the language basically says that we will send someone a proposed assessment, including terms of payment. So that gives us the, the administrative authority to to set terms of the payment. Of course, we would have standardized that. Um, we haven't developed that internal directive yet, but we would.
Okay.
I, my initial thinking, you know, we'll discuss this and somebody may talk me out of it or may decide it's a better idea, but my initial thinking would probably just be to set the, the due date for payment out uh, you know, a significant amount of time, six months or a year, rather than a structured payment plan. Say, okay, you've got, you know, six months to pay this or one year to pay this. And if you want to put yourself on your own payment plan or wait till the end and make a quote unquote balloon payment or however you want to do it, that's kind of up to you. But this ordinance gives us the flexibility to do that.
Okay, great. I appreciate you clearing that up. Thank you.
All right. We, as I said before, we did have a public hearing on this. Uh, we are, this is the second reading and so we're, it's something we are considering to adopt tonight and uh I will uh, I will still open it up for public comment uh at this time just to make sure we hear from everybody. So I'll start with people on Zoom. Anyone wish to address the council on the matter of uh well, there are chapters twelve point oh one and twelve point oh five of the Troutdale Municipal Code pertaining to public works code violations and public sidewalk maintenance.
Mayor Rittma, Paul Ocock, Troutdale?
Yes, Paul.
Okay, thank you. Uh, these are just kind of observations. I don't need specific answers from Travis at all. It's just, just comments. First off, I think the city bears some responsibility for sidewalk damage caused by tree roots in particular. The city has in the past approved and planted street trees which have invasive surface root systems. And I don't believe root barriers have ever been or are currently required. Our HOA has replaced trees on entire streets due to root intrusion, but installed root barriers around the replacement trees at an added cost. The compliance time limit could be problematic during the prime construction season when contractors might not be interested, might not be interested in a single panel replacement when they could be constructing ADA bull bouts for Multnomah County. If it comes to the city selecting the contractor, how will the appearance of favoritism be avoided? Will the city provide a list of approved contractors? A homeowner might get up, go out on their own and find a guy with a pickup and wheelbarrow and have a failed sidewalk a year later. Will the city assure the work is of it, is of an acceptable quality? There could be instances where there is just, where there is a disagreement whether the damage rises to the level of needing replacement or simply grinding or cutting. What if the sidewalk excavation causes utility damage or results in the death of the adjacent tree? Of course, there are also situations where the tree would need to be removed at an added cost and the homeowner might not, might prefer to not have the tree replaced. If the homeowner is unable to pay and the lien route is taken, what would the accruing interest rate be on the outstanding balance? It might be decades before the city recoup that initial cost. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Anyone else online wish to address the city council on this matter?
Oh, Chair, this is Frank Stevens, City of Troutdale.
Yes, Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to uh reiterate uh how this um policy connects with the tree code. We're currently working on a tree code in the city, so a lot of the questions that are being asked are actually part of that discussion as well. I think this uh provides the option to homeowners to rectify some of the design flaws that have been historically in our design, especially in developments, and that will be part of the tree code uh discussion as well. I just love the idea of the, the fact that this provides the opportunity to a homeowner, not only to increase their value of their home, but also to uh deal with past design issues as well. Um, yes, there's a lot of details that need to be worked out, but I um, I have confidence in the staff that they will find the solutions to those. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else online wish to address the council on this matter? All right. Seeing no one, I'll, uh, anyone in the council chambers wish to address the council on the matter of the uh this change in the. Wish to address the council on the matter of the, this change in the sidewalk rules?
Dave, the only comment I have is I, you know, Paul, you brought up.
Well, I, I was just, Counselor Allen, I am gonna let the council speak. So next, I'm, I'm reading my script. This is time for anybody in the council chambers. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Counselor Allen.
Okay, sorry. All right. So Paul, I brought up a couple of those things that you brought up tonight last time. So my concern is, is that when you have builders around that are really busy and you can't get somebody, my concern is a homeowner is just left waiting for a contractor to come and do the job. And then why should they be punished for waiting on a contractor? And the other one is the city did plant trees. And I'm concerned about why the city is not bearing some of the burden for some of the trees that are damaging the sidewalks now. Why does it have to be the whole house owner having to pay for those when the city put the trees there?
Travis, do you want to address those issues?
It's a matter of council policy.
There's also a long history on the benefits of street trees. Benefits not only to the community, but to the value of people's houses, the walkability in the neighborhood, livability in the community. There's all these other aspects to street trees that come into play throughout the urban landscape. And just to give you an example, Counselor, when my family was looking for a place to settle, put roots down, we went to Seattle, which is like an urban jungle and it has very little street coverage, like street tree or landscape or anything else. And just the urban-esque nature of that entire like concrete everywhere with no trees was enough to kind of drive us away. So when you have that urban treescape and you have that green space within your neighborhoods, it improves the value of those homes. It improves the attractiveness of that neighborhood. And you get a, a higher level clientele that come to your communities. So we're investing in ourselves, if you will, and we depend on our property owners to keep their property up to that standard. And that's kind of what that policy, that's kind of underlying theme of those policies as they were developed back way back in the day.
Mind you, I love trees. I mean, I love the trees that I have around my house, right? But I'm just concerned that trees that were planted 30 years ago are now wreaking havoc in some of the sidewalks. And it wasn't because of the owner who bought the house 5 years ago. It was he put the trees there. So that was just my concern. And I want to voice that concern because I know I've heard that concern. So.
One of the things that I've seen, sorry to interrupt. One of the things that I've seen communities do is they'll have the developer put in the street trees. Like the land will have, like the city would have like a landscape code that says you all need to do this. And then the developers in doing the subdivisions install the trees. And then they would essentially pass on that responsibility of the maintenance and upkeep of the trees and the public green spaces to an HOA that is formed to maintain those areas in their pristine nature. And so if there is a problem tree that comes along, that tree is then rooted, taken out, fixed. Panel's fixed and everything. The HOA is the one that takes care of that because everyone's investing in that public fund for that duration. I've seen a lot of communities invest in that. And then it takes the city out of that aspect altogether.
I'll, I'll expand on that a little bit. As I, as I talked extensively about during the last council meeting. You see, the city planted the trees. In many cases in subdivisions, city forces did plant the trees. But as I discussed, they are doing that on behalf of the developer as a practical matter because of the order of subdivision development, home building in the traditional way, which is becoming a lot less traditional these days. But for decades, the sort of the common model was you had land developers that would develop the infrastructure for a subdivision, sell lots. Home builders would come in and build the homes. The land developer often be out of the picture at that point. As a practical matter, it doesn't make sense to plant trees while you're still building homes. Because they're in the way, they're going to get damaged. A lot of work going on around those lots. So for many years, the city, I think many other cities do the same thing. Rather than have the developer actually plant the trees, developer pay a fee to the city and they would plant the trees on the developer's behalf. So in a sense, the city has been doing what Mike talked about. They're just, they just did it that way. The city's just done it that way because it makes practical sense from an order of operations perspective. So really, I mean, it's semantics, but you know, it's really the developer is responsible for the planting of the trees that required to plant trees for all the benefits that Mike enumerated earlier. And as far as why should someone be responsible for that, you could ask the same question. Why should someone be responsible for fixing the sidewalk? Why should someone be responsible for maintaining their landscaping strip or cutting their grass? With land ownership becomes responsibility, there become duties. When you buy a piece of property, you often buy problems with the piece of property. So if there's a problem tree, whether it's in your backyard or in the landscaping strip, when you bought that property, you took responsibility for that problem. There are many benefits to owning property, but there are also duties and responsibilities.
Any other questions? Yes, John?
I have two different, two different points to be here. One is that the trees, a lot of the trees that are causing problems now are not approved trees nowadays. And the other was something that Travis brought up last week, that when the city does it, they'll put root blocks in.
Well, let me correct you there. At present, that is not part of the standard, but they are working on that with the tree plan that Frank Stevens mentioned.
But if the city comes in and does the tree or the sidewalk replacement, they would put root blocks in with that concrete, right?
That is not part of our standard right now. And each one of those cases would be, would depend. Because with the tree, with trees, it's very site-specific. If there's a tree problem, then we have our, our park superintendent, who's also a certified arborist, come out and look at it with our engineering tech and contractor, the homeowner. Okay, what can we do about this tree root? Can we cut this tree root off? Or is it going to kill the tree? Does the tree then need to be removed? A lot of that is very case by case. It depends on the tree, it depends on the circumstances. Those are all evaluated on a case by case basis.
Another point of view, I noticed that the county up here by the medical clinic, the skincare place, when they redid 257, they took out trees and replaced, well, they didn't replace the trees, they put a new sidewalk. All of that was upheaval. My other question is, I did notice on here that the attorney has a no on here. Or that is that that you were not contacted or you?
Actually, I was contacted by Travis and looked at it and that's, that's an error. I did look at it and I just wanted your input.
Do you approve it?
Yes. Good question.
I'm gonna guess that's probably because of the online system they use that it's a no until someone clicks it to say yes. And it just sends an oversight notice.
All right. Yes, Glenn?
I remember when Reynolds had the street trees cut down and everyone in the city was in uproar over that. But we were told that street trees are meant, meant to be replaced when they get too big because it causes sight vision problems and things like that. You know, my, my reluctance on passing this tonight is knowing that you're working on a street tree plan. I'd almost rather see that first because right now you, you don't have to plant a tree. And if we're going to force people to plant a tree, then they're gonna have, there's gonna be a lot of expense to folks. Because there's no root bearer that's gonna stop a tree. It'll, they'll bend steel. And that's why it breaks concrete. And that was brought up when we did the first go around. We had many, many meetings over street trees. I agree with what Mike said, they're beautiful, but if you go to compare having a couple thousand dollars possibly because of that tree, you know, that's a big burden. I don't know if we could put this thing on the back burner until we get through the tree. How, how far out are we on the tree plan for the city?
Months and months. I'll just remind you, Counselor White, that this is a current issue. The, the aim of this ordinance is primarily to resolve difficulties with the court process, which are current. This is, this ordinance is not about trees.
The graph shows it's pretty, pretty low amount of problems, so.
Well, we've had 13 cases this year go past their deadline.
Like we were talking last, last week, and I think we have Sam on, online to kind of talk about this as well. But I think the idea was to streamline the process in the courts, reduce the staff oversight that we have to spend on, on these matters and to, to get this to the end solution that the community is hoping for when we receive these complaints. So this just gives us an avenue to successfully navigate the procedures to get an end solution and then move on.
Get the police out of the process. That was really the genesis of this, this review. Was the police learned that they were going to have to serve these, these summons for sidewalk violations? And they said, we don't want to do that. They will as long as the ordinance says they have to, but they don't want to.
And they're currently contracted, so I'm, I'm more concerned about your workload than Eric.
If I could just speak to this briefly, this is Stan Marsk, the City Prosecutor.
Go ahead.
I, I would just point out a couple of things. One is, and this I think speaks maybe to an answer to the question the mayor had earlier. As far as I'm aware, there's currently three cases that are working their way through the municipal court right now under the current code structure. And I, I guess I would just make a point of mentioning that that current code structure is, in my view, and I can be more specific about this, but in my view is much more punitive than this revised code structure. And essentially, just to give you kind of the broad framework of the current structure, it's designed to summon a person into court and then to have, if they're found to be in violation of the code, to have the judge impose financial penalties up to a thousand dollars per violation, I believe, until the person complies and fixes their sidewalk. And that speaks to kind of what Travis has mentioned, which is that for non-responsive individuals, what happens is just a massive accrual or what will happen is just a large accrual of financial penalties, which will, I think, ultimately be recorded as lien against their property. But it does not achieve the kind of primary objective, which is to have the sidewalk fixed. And so that's why I think more than just having the sheriff's department taken out of the equation, this actually effect, the changes actually effectuate repair of the sidewalks, which I think should be the goal of this code chapter.
Any other questions?
Just, I just have one.
Yes?
Well, if you put a lien on a homeowner for the job that you do, is that lien enter interest through all the years? So that $750 could end up being $5,000 20 years down the road. Is that correct?
You know what the rate of interest is?
All right.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, go ahead, Jeffrey.
I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending chapters 12.01 and 12.05 of the Troutdale Municipal Code pertaining to public works code violations and public sidewalk maintenance.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Sarah, please call a roll.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rippa?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Limi?
Yes.
And Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
All right. It passed. Let's go on to agenda item number 5.1, an update on the Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group. Mike?
Hi, Eric. So I just want to talk a little bit about the IGA that Gresham is proposing. We have a meeting on November 6th with the Fire District Task Force at 3:30. I believe Mayor Rippa and Counselor One will be there with that, as well as myself. And with the IGA, what we've asked Gresham to consider is to go back and instead of a 10% increase in year one, we're asking for a more historical 7.3% because that's what it's been over the last five years. And then just follow that forward for the next five years. We asked for the off-ramp option, exit clause. And then what Mr. Wilcox pointed out, and nice catch, Mr. Wilcox on that, is in the last paragraph of the whereas is it says three years. That was a typo. It should say five years. So those are kind of the three things that we pushed back to Gresham. They are taking the request over to their financial department to see if that's feasible. And we're expecting a reply from them here in the very near future. And then hopefully we'll be able to move forward with the agreement. And I plan to bring it forward to this council on November 18th, hopefully after the task force meeting on the 6th.
Thanks, Mike. Other questions or comments from the council on this? It's, Gresham did come forward with a proposal. It needs a bit of negotiation. That's where we're, we're working on it. All right, well.
I, I do have a quick question, if I may, Dave.
Sure.
Yeah, I was listening in on the, the meeting from last time around and there was mention of the, the, the $8 million essential, essentially discrepancy with materials and services. You know, it's, it sounds like, you know, I, I think Jeffrey brought up that, you know, staffing is the problem with increased calls as well, like, you know, I, I, I don't know what the problem is when it comes to reducing like top heavy costs. They have, you know, more guys in gear, they run more, more staff on much lower cost on the west side. So it just, to me, it's, there's a lot of questions I think that still need to be answered. I think Tanny made a good point too of the, you know, he, he mentioned like 1.5 million for a police start. Obviously, it's going to increase that from there for our own police force. But, you know, if we're really looking at charging what we're charging and putting money into the general fund, you know, there was talk of other things getting done. That would be kind of another discussion topic I'd want to get a little bit more info on. I mean, I know there's imagination station and a lot of lingering big ticket items that we would be able to hopefully tackle, that being the case. But that still leaves millions of dollars kind of on the table, so to speak. And might give us some flexibility to, you know, maybe talk some options as far as reducing the, the hit to our taxpayers here. If, you know, we're looking at our city balance and like what we're coming in with on, on our end. So I don't know, I'm just, I, I, there was a good discussion. I'm really interested to see how that kind of pans out. Especially, like I said, I just feel like there's a lot of kind of nebulous, you know, points in play when it comes to how, how things are being managed through Gresham. So just, just some thoughts I had.
All right. Other questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll, we'll be reporting soon on the discussions in the task force. We're still obviously trying to work out something to make sure Troutdale is, has fire and EMT protection. All right, I'm gonna move on to. to make sure Troutdale has fire and EMT protection. All right, I'm going to move on to staff communication, although that's somewhat separate from this six point one. So Mike, however you want to handle it, the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission is, well, there's a proposal that it be dissolved.
Yes.
And you can address it before or after any other staff communications you want to do.
All right. So yes, I'll just jump on that one first, I think, because it's relevant to what's going on right now. The Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission voted to pursue dissolution here toward the end of the next fiscal year, so I think that's June thirtieth. They passed around a letter to all of us to see if we'd be interested in pursuing that rather than a withdrawal. It allows for the, what do you want to call it, the land dissolving of the organization and the splitting up of the assets versus a withdrawal simply pulls us out and would leave those assets. And I'm sitting there at the whims of those still within the commission. So as we probably already know, the Mount Hood Regulatory Commission is simply the pass-through agency to the providers. In our case, it would be like Metro East. Troutdale shares about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on franchise fees that we get from the cable companies. Of that, about seventy-six thousand goes into Metro East, around twenty-eight thousand, I think, goes into PEG funds, and then we receive approximately twenty-two thousand to Troutdale in the form of franchise fees that service our community. So with the dissolution of the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission, the responsibility of those funds and how those funds are used would then fall on our shoulders individually. So that'd be Troutdale, Gresham, Monuma County, Fairview, Wood Village, we would all have our, and Portland, we all have our own responsibility on doling out those funds for the authorized uses. So it might take some additional oversight from our end, because there are stipulations on the franchise monies on how they can be spent. A portion, I think the PEG money can only go into capital expenditures that are designed to provide information to the public. I think the other portion that currently Metro East is the beneficiary of is to essentially use to provide information out. So, and then the other franchise fees is for administration. So there are, I think, requirements with those funds that we should probably be aware of, but I think it's probably just as safe in our hands as it is in Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission's hands. So, and probably takes one step out of the process.
All right, thanks, Mike. The, the letter in our packet, which did have a typo but was corrected, and you were all sent copies, basically states that Troutdale is communicating its interest in participating in a joint dissolution process rather than just withdrawing, which is, I checked with Norm Thomas, our longtime, very long, thirty-year maybe representative on the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission, and knows everything about it, and he thought that this was the way to go, not to withdraw and basically kill it, but to have all the participants in the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission draft a joint dissolution agreement that distributes the funds fairly, and Troutdale will still receive its franchise fee and has, as Mike pointed out, some obligations on what the money can be used for that really won't change. There just won't be a Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission after, was it June thirtieth, I think, of next year. So this is information. We don't, we're not really asking for a vote. I think staff wanted to bring it forward so that the council was aware this was happening, and unless there's some objection, anyway, I'll open it up for questions. Are there any questions about this matter? It's, it's partly the result of cable television subscriptions being on a serious downward path, and the end is nigh, let's put it that way. All right, well, thanks, Mike. We're going to go ahead and express Troutdale's communication of our interest in participating in a joint dissolution agreement. Presumably, the final agreement will have to be agreed to by Troutdale. It'll come back to council at that time. And any details that we don't agree with, we'll let you know, including our longtime representative, Norm, if he thinks there's something unfair about it. Anyway, all right, anything else on council or staff communications, Mike?
I just add to that one thing that I spoke with Andrew Spear with Mount Hood just the other day, and the one thing that I asked is, because I'm not familiar with the entire history of how they've been handing out the capital improvement, the PEG funds and those sort of things, I just want to make sure that Troutdale gets their fair share of this. And so I was asking him to kind of take a look at the history, because sometimes those funds go in a pot, and then they're, they're basically doled out by the Mount Hood Regulatory Commission, and maybe some of those funds didn't necessarily come back to Troutdale. And so what I'd like to know, and this is what I asked him, is where have they gone and where are we in the line for a potential capital grant on some of these things? I know we got cameras and things of that nature not too long ago, but sometimes these things go in cycles, like one, one year, it's community A gets it, next year, community B gets it, next year, community C gets it. So, so I don't want to see us give up the opportunity. Maybe we're next in line. And so maybe there's a history there and some more information that I asked Andrew to kind of dig into from our standpoint to make sure that we get our fair shake on it.
Good.
For staff communication, I think the council was all copied in on the presentation tomorrow with Monoma County Housing at Walmore Middle School. Hopefully, I'm seeing it right. And it's at six thirty. They're talking about the days in up by Baymar, so if you all have an interest in that, encourage you to make it. Oh, and we're meeting with the negotiation crew with the conference tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Ribbon cutting tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon at one thirty. Thanks, Eric, he's like, so yes, ribbon cutting on the Sharon Nesbit Park at one thirty tomorrow. Weather looks like it's going to hold for us, so we're really excited about that.
Good. All right, we'll go on to council communications. Counselor Allen?
Oh, I have nothing.
Counselor One?
I don't have anything either.
All right. I'll just say, I, because I'm out of the country, or at least out of the states, let's put it that way, in Puerto Rico, I won't be able to attend the ribbon cutting for the Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park at one thirty. That's tomorrow, Wednesday. Glad to hear the weather's going to be good. I did enlist Counselor White, our council president, to read a statement in my stead, because Sharon's a longtime and good friend and good friend and benefactor of the city of Troutdale, and I'm just delighted that we're naming the park that's Sharon Nesbit Heritage Park. And that's tomorrow at one thirty, somewhere along the trail. I don't actually know where that's occurring, but wherever the crowd forms. And I'll just say, I've spent a few days in Puerto Rico. I was, I passed through Puerto Rico one other time, but it's been an experience and a good one. But in case anyone's interested, Tropical Storm Melissa that turned into this massive hurricane in the Caribbean hit neighboring islands, but I, there's been no rain at all the whole time I've been here. So it's managed to bypass. It's, I think it's heading, I don't think it's going to hit the continental United States, but it's heading up and near Florida, and it's a big topic of conversation here, but luckily, I've escaped it on this trip, so long may it continue. I'm only here a few more days, but that's all I have. Counselor White? I was just going to remind everybody that Thursday night, there'll be a lot of kids out trick-or-treating.
Friday.
Friday. Oh, yeah, Friday. And.
I do know it's Friday.
They're meeting for the Sharon Nesbit. My kids are adults now, so that's why I missed that one, but they're meeting behind the factory outlet. Is that right, Erica?
The overlook along the trail.
Oh, the actual overlook, okay.
So people can park behind the office.
They can park there.
Or people can park near the visitor center.
And then there's, there's going to be hot drinks and snacks at the visitor center?
Yes. So if you haven't been to the visitor center and rail museum afterwards, come on down for snacks and hot drinks.
Do you know when the merchants are going to hand out candy? A lot of our downtown stores have a tradition of handing out candy. It's during the daylight hours.
Four thirty to six.
Four thirty to six.
Four thirty to six.
What day?
Friday.
On Friday, okay. That's a, that's a great, usually a good turnout for the kids. And I just want to compliment our mayor on handling this meeting over Zoom. I think that's a first, and he did an excellent job. That's all I have. Okay, Jesse?
One quick thing. I got an email from a Troutdale resident. Mayor Ripma got this email. I don't think it went out to any other councillors. She lives down on Sturgis Drive, off of Cherry Park there, and has a very detailed, thorough email with multiple videos and instances of speeding and traffic accidents caught on camera. And she wants to see speed bumps put in, and I told her I would bring that up, maybe ask some questions on processes or something like that, and how something like that goes. And I would love some information to get back to her.
Well, we can definitely get back to her on it, on the process. I don't have an answer for you right now. We do have Travis in the audience. We could ask him to share.
For a second. Where is it on Sturgis where this is happening?
It's like a almost semi-dead end, though.
It kind of is, yeah, it comes, yeah.
Where's the, where are the incidents occurring? Is it along two fifty-seventh?
He says, no, it's on Sturgis, real near Edgefield.
Oh, let's go through the new development.
So it's not, most of the southwest Sturgis Drive. For speed bumps on southwest Sturgis Drive and southwest Edgefield Avenue. So that's not off two fifty-seventh?
If I may.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm familiar. I saw the same email come in this afternoon, and it's Sturgis just off two fifty-seventh, across from Cherry Park, the northern Cherry Park.
Cherry Park.
Edgefield Avenue, I think it's called, intersects Sturgis, right? Just about two, a couple hundred feet down from two fifty-seventh. They live kind of right, I think maybe they're on the corner.
They live in that?
I think it is at the corner, actually. And to your question, the process, there's a longstanding speed bump evaluation plan that the council adopted many years ago and was updated in ten sometime, largely because of the changeover to the Monoma County Sheriff's Office, because there were references to the Troutdale Police, and the sheriff wanted to do some of their, their part of that process a little differently. But that process has been in place for many years. It was put in place originally in the late nineties, as I recall, by the way. And because there were people coming out and, you know, sort of coming out of the woodwork asking for speed bumps, and the way that, the way that came about is initially, there was no process. People would, right, the council, come to a council meeting, usually one resident, I've got a big speeding problem on my street, it's terrible, somebody's going to get killed. Oh, council would say, oh, my gosh, that's terrible, go put in speed bumps, Public Works. Public Works, go put in the speed bumps. Half a dozen more residents would show up at the next council meeting. We hate speed bumps. Why did you put these in? Nobody talked to us about it. The council quickly learned that they needed a process to involve the neighborhood, to draw support for it. It was very controversial. My experience working in the speed bump program since the nineties, people love them or they hate them passionately, either way. And that's why there's a very deliberate process that the council worked out many years ago that's, that we've followed for many, many years. It is involved. It requires a lot of light work on the part of the community, and that's partly by design, I think, by the council. They didn't want people to make frivolous requests, you know. Oh, I got mad at somebody that speeded down my street today. I'm going to go tell the council I want speed bumps. You know, they wanted people that were serious. They didn't want frivolous requests. They wanted people that were willing to put in some sweat equity to sort of ensure that they really meant it, that they really felt passionate about it. And, and then a big part of that is building that broad base of support in the neighborhood, so that, that's why it requires essentially two-thirds of the affected households to support a speed bump petition before the city will even consider it. And then, of course, there are some technical thresholds as well, because speed bumps, they do a very specific thing, and if it's, if that's not going to be a benefit, then the city's not going to want to install them and maintain them, or cause people the headache of driving over them every day for that matter, or the impact on emergency vehicles. There's lots of things to consider, basically. So the whole plan's on our website, and so I encourage you to go review that. You will find it is very involved. It takes, it takes time. It takes energy. I think that was by design.
We just parked the decoy car over there.
Well, in fact, you know, one of the, one of the principles that's built into that plan that says it very clearly is that Troutdale's guiding principle has been since at least the nineties, that it is an enforcement-first, enforcement-first principle. That is the preferred way to abate neighborhood speeding, is enforcement. When enforcement is not possible or ineffective, then the city considers engineering controls, and they've adopted speed bumps as their preferred engineering control.
Glad you were here.
Yeah, thank you. That's all for me. Thanks.
All right, Counselor Leeny?
I don't have anything.
All right, Counselor Andrews?
Yeah, I wanted to give a shout out to the recreation staff. The Little Trout Play Park has been really great for my family. It's at the Glen Auto Building every Tuesday. It's gone from September and it's going through December, but I just wanted to give them a shout out. They've been doing a great job, and it's really cool to get kids, you know, playing together, and that's been terrific. Definitely going to be trick-or-treating this week at the local businesses. It's nice to kind of have an earlier spot so we're not out there in the potential rain and the dark. So really grateful for the Troutdale businesses for putting that on, and I'm sure that'll be a good time, and looking forward to the ribbon cutting tomorrow. I'm sure I'll see some of you there. That's it for me.
Okay. Well, there's one more thing.
Oh, sorry. I got excited.
Oh.
My.
Was that a motion?
In a second.
Okay. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thanks a lot.